We're going to go ahead and call the county, our city council meeting of November 18th to order. Please stand. Bobby Campbell, invocation please.
Gracious God, we thank you for another day that we have not seen before. God, we thank you, God, for the people who are present today. God, be with all of them, be with all of our families. God, continue to watch over us and keep us. God, we ask you to continue to be with this council, watch over them and give them what they need to continue to make the wise choices and wise decisions for our city. God, watch over their minds, their hearts, Lord, keep them healthy. God, we ask you to be with all of our city staff, God, continue to watch over them and keep them safe. We thank you, God, for our first responders, continue to keep them protected, Father God, as they keep us protected. God, we ask you to be with this meeting, help us, Lord, that we'll all come together as one, Lord. Help us to know that all decisions made, that at the end, we're still a one community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Pairs.
Here.
Councilperson Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Gill.
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Stavney.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all nine members are present.
We have minutes to be approved for November 4th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for November 4th, 2018.
We have a motion second to approve the minutes, any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Approval of the agenda, item 13 needs to be tabled. That's the only change that I'm aware of.
Just make sure it's the agenda that was in front of you tonight. So I'll make a motion to approve that agenda. Tabling, uh, number 13 under new business.
Do we need to amend an agenda?
According to Larry, no.
So, I believe that everyone was sent an agenda by the clerk that did not have number 13 there, correct?
No, it has number 13. The agenda that you have in your hands was the one I sent out today. And Larry said, "No, we did not need to," since this was, this is the original one. Consider it.
So, you're going to group the table?
Yes. So I did.
All is in favor, sign if five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So to clarify, typically we have an agenda come out ahead of time, more so than the day of, and that's the agenda unless it's changed in this meeting. And that's not what we just approved now.
What happened was, I didn't put public hearing on there. That was the change. Under Mr. Curry, so he would know that the hearing notice was noted, the here, public hearing was noticed, it was posted. That was my error, so you were going to have a public hearing anyway.
Right.
So I just made the agenda that says public hearing.
And then also number 12 was added from Thursday, which Lisa put out an email.
Lisa put out an email and you said you would support it. So that's why it's on here.
And I plan to. I just want to make sure that we're following procedure.
Have you received an agenda that has these 21 items, correct?
Uh, not as this is, no. I got this today, yes. But our prior practice has always been we've received an agenda on the Thursday before the meeting.
And what I would say is, my belief is this is the first time you've had an opportunity to approve an agenda.
Okay.
So that, that was, is how I interpret it.
Okay.
When the agenda, the matter clerk's agenda is not an approved agenda when she sends it to you.
Okay.
So this is what she's proposed, prepared, proposed, so you offered that. Does that make sense?
Sure. We've, we've just been in positions before where things have been brought to a council meeting and approved on an agenda without any prior notice. And that's not what happened here.
Right.
But this is getting away from the, the procedure that we've held in the past. So, I'm okay. I'm good with everything that's on the agenda. I just don't like surprises and I don't want to open up the situation where we could be surprised in the future.
And I would suggest that I would at that point indicate that there was no indication of order.
Okay.
Since this was presented in the.
If there was any objection from anyone, I would say we'd need to vote for it for sure.
Okay.
But there was no objection, it was just, there was advance notice, so. Alright, with that, claims to be approved. Civil first.
I have a couple of changes on page 10. The second and third from the very top for Allison Lane Animal Hospital were incorrect amounts. So the new amount for the second one is $194.98. And the second, or the third one would be $244.44, which is a reduction in the total of $109.85, which brings the total, can't we say it again? Yes. Okay. So, on page 10, the second one is $194.98. And the third is $244.44, which is a total reduction of $109.85. And that brings the total to $1,314,773.78.
So are the claims in order?
Yes.
I tell you, my blood pressure was just fine, I only cut those two things, so.
That's good.
Send out a plaud for me.
I will.
It was, it was very nice calling the claims, let's go around. So if there ain't any questions, I'll make a motion to approve the amended amount of
We have a motion second to approve the claims with that amended amount. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Alright, next up Parks.
Parks is $36,932.35.
All claims in order?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve Parks claims for $36,932.35.
We have a motion second to approve the Parks claims, any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. First up, item number nine, Dustin White, resolution of common counsel renewing and extending the terms of the urban enterprise zone. Isn't that right? From October, tabled from October 21st?
About 300 percent.
Is there any presentation?
How do you want to proceed with that? I guess somebody has to take it off the table.
So you want to take that off the agenda?
No. It's, you have to take it off the table.
Oh.
So make a motion to bring it forward from the table.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to remove 2019 R16 from being tabled.
Second. Motion second to, to remove it from being tabled. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. White, it shows you you're speaker, you're not speaker on this?
Oh, well, is there a presentation? I thought the council decided there was going to be a presentation.
I'm sorry, I just thought you over called it, I didn't speak.
Mr. White, your, your name was on it, that's why I was asking.
Okay.
Again, I want to thank council for allowing the J U E A to make a presentation for renewing our term for five more years. We did take a lot of the suggestions that the board sent from our last, from the last meeting and put those into new bylaws. They were ratified this past Wednesday, and they will be noted in the presentation. And just another thought, all of our members' terms expire December 31st. Several of the members are appointed by you, by you, the council, and several I have spoken with, including myself, would like to, to continue to be a member of that board. So with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Nathan. I've got both, got both a, a letter from the Spring and Spa and a copy of our new bylaws to present to you.
Perfect. Two down. Alright, we're working, all three, here we go, all three screens. So, I'm Nathan Pruitt, planning direct, not planning director actually, excuse me, I'm so used to that. Wow, okay, so I'm the executive director of the Urban Enterprise Zone, pleased to be before you today, thank you for having us for a moment. I'm just going to give you a little bit of history about our organization, what we do, give you a sneak peek behind the scenes, and ask for your renewal for the next five years. So we're going to start with some signature initiatives. These are just a selection of things that we've done. Dustin White has mentioned many of them. These are just some big, big items that you will have noticed or you'll see in the community. Everything from steamboat days to the art bike racks to the arch on Chestnut Street, the city wayfinding that you see throughout the city as well, and we also did some revitalization grants and some other property improvements. So that's just a selection, 2013 to 2015, that predates me. One of our signature initiatives in this kind of 2016 till now phase was bringing over Louisville Bike Share. So we brought three stations to Jeffersonville, we're the first community across the river from Louisville to get this on this side. And I'm happy to report, we have the number one check-in checkout station, it's at Big Four Park, in the entire system Louisville wide. So, that's really exciting. Spring Street Enhancement, so I presented to you at the last council meeting about the Spring Street Project, that's an after picture, and UEZ did communicate or contribute $300,000 towards that effort. Jeff Main Street, so we actually do an annual support to Jeff Main Street to help them with their program and funding of that organization, and Jay, Jay is here tonight, their director, and I think he signed up for public comment on this, so he'll, he'll talk to you just briefly a little bit later. So we also have city partnerships, the J U E A works with the city on maintenance and security of Big Four Station, Park, we also do some other streetscape projects and lighting and sidewalks and things of that nature. Another thing that you may not know is we actually offer scholarships to students that live within the zone. And so, from 2013 until now, we've actually awarded 11 student scholarships. This total is $115,000. They're allowed to continue their scholarship with good grades for up to eight semesters. So it's, it's a scholarship, it's not a full ride, obviously they have a lot more to contribute than, than what we give them to, to make it through that program. But you can see a list of example institutions that we've, we've granted to on their behalf. So we also do a lot of community events support, and so we'll provide seed money to get things up and running, or be the title sponsor of the, of the actual event itself, and so we'll be their primary funder. And so, we've done things like the Fresh Stop Market, which approached, which was a produce market in the Clayesburg area that targets lower income individuals, and there's a sliding scale of payment there, that's what the picture's from. We've done farm-to-table and progressive dinners, we've done Clark County Cares, also Clayesburg Days and, and some events of that nature, Steamboat Nights, also an event, and Women Empowering Women, which is a kind of a symposium. We also help support neighborhoods and their associations, and so we give the opportunity for them to come before the board and ask for funding every year. This is an example of one of the projects that Rose Hill put in place a couple of years back, it's the Century Placks. They're, they're fantastic plaques, they're really well done, and they were able to do that through our funding efforts. We also help with real estate improvements, and I'm going to run through a couple of those here, because I think they're pretty impactful. So one of the things that we started was a Clayesburg front porch grant, and that's similar to Jeff Main Street's grant. And you can see the before picture there, this one needed a roof, it was leaking, and gutters and siding. We're also happy to be a primary supporter of the Clark County Health Department move, they are now going to be on 12th Street, it's a huge building for them and really exciting because they've needed this space for a long time. They're under rent now right now. We also contributed significantly to the Carriage House at the Steamboat Museum as well, which you're all familiar with, it's outstanding property. And we also help with Silica Ceramic Studio, this is just one example of a business that we've helped, and also we've done some community religious institution assistance as well, St. Paul's came in and reopened the building next to their church as well. So another big signature initiative that we've taken on is the Tree Walk. It's a one and a half mile route, we planted about 140 trees, there are 70 species, it's fantastic, it has wayfinding and signage throughout, definitely check that out if you get the chance. And that is a picture of people planting trees on one of our assistance days on Court Avenue, it's fantastic. Alright, I'm just going to give you a sneak peek into some of our general ledger for the 2018 calendar year. So, this is our general expenses for the year, this is what it takes as an overhead to run the organization, every organization has a baseline overhead, it's around $47,000. We put towards projects, a total of $476,000 towards our mission critical projects. So that's all to say, well, we'll get to that in a minute. So here are revenues for the last 2018 fiscal year as well. So we carry over balances from year to year, and the reason for that is predominantly because some projects take longer than a year to complete, much like a city infrastructure project, it takes a couple of years to really get it completed. So we have a carryover balance, we intake new revenue, and then we draw interest on some of that. So there you can see from the previous slide are general expensive and expenses and our project totals. So if you're looking at a cash basis, we do operate in the negative, I mean, we are a nonprofit after all, we're not making a profit. But, the true story is, we never run into the negative in our bank account, we always have some revenues from the previous year that are executing projects that are holdovers. So, don't fear, we're not in the negative, we're not in the red. So I just wanted to quickly point out that the Better Business Bureau looks at nonprofits and charitable organizations, and their best practices that you should spend at least 65% of your revenues on mission critical projects. So, not overhead. So if we look at what we spend just on the 2018 year, we actually, we're at 91% towards mission, mission projects, or, or projects that are based on our granting legislation, which is far exceeding standard, which is kind of fantastic. So, if we look at the history of the organization and where we're moving forward in terms of financial outlook, we all know that the revenues are somewhat decreasing, and that is because there's a 10-year sunset to some of the benefits of the zone. One of those major things that has happened is that Jeff Boat has closed. That means in the 2020 year, and they were approaching the 10-year sunset anyhow, but in the 2020 year, we will lose that revenue stream. So that's why that, that number is dropping pretty precipitously. And so what you see here is kind of a tapering off of revenues, which is to be expected unless new projects happen. So with a five-year renewal, that would be our window there, we have the potential via the dash line, if new projects occur, and if people take advantage of any zone credits, we could more stably taper off that instead of kind of precipitously going that direction. And it gives more time for people to get used to those revenue cycles and streams, and for any institutions that we would grant money to, to come up with alternative revenue plans in the meantime. It just makes it a little bit softer of a landing, if you've ever flown, you know exactly what I'm saying. As far as governance, the J U E A is, or the zones statewide are established by state criteria. This is actually just pulled from Indiana State Code, this is what the zone is supposed to do, coordinate zone development activities, be a catalyst for the zone, so improve it, market it, make it more robust, and continue to build up. And then there's a lot of communication that's, that's in that as well. So, Peggy just mentioned that we did update our bylaws after receiving comment from the city council, we passed that on to the committee that was working on the bylaws, I think it was three officers or at least three board members as well as our attorney. Those bylaws were ratified on 13th of this year, or this month, rather. The big changes that we have updated our bylaws to include are listed here, so there's going to be an annual presentation to the council, much like I'm doing today. There's a financial review that will be completed every two years internally, and actually we are engaged, right now I'll be back here tomorrow at City Hall, working with MCM, doing an engagement for '27 and 2018 review. And also, the organization will put its documents available online in the future, we'll have to work on that, there'll be some kind of taking off of that process, it won't be immediate tomorrow. And also the director is now a non-voting member by, by bylaws, and the chair has been reassigned or retweaked as far as their positions within the community, the chair does have to be someone that's not elected and is not running for office presently. So the benefits of the zone, there are three categories of benefactors for zone businesses, or for the zone. One is businesses, so this is to do with investment deductions and employee expense credits, so essentially they, they bring money in, they transform a property, they build something new, and they get a slight tax break for them, and then some of that is passed on to us. Also, they get a credit for employing zone business, zone residents as well. Lenders are also incentivized to make more loans in the zone by an interest credit, so we've seen a pretty big uptick in this, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. And then the last thing is individual workers and residents of the zone, if they work and live within the zone, they actually get a state income tax deduction, it's pretty significant, it's up to $7,500 off of their gross income. So, I don't know exactly what that translates into tax, but it helps on their personal income tax. So businesses file an enterprise zone business registration every year. We have seen, obviously, increased expansion of new business and, or at least revamping of existing businesses. The lenders, so this is really interesting, we've seen a really large uptick in our loan interest credit revenue, that means that banks are lending to zone businesses really a lot more heavily, which is really, really exciting. And essentially, the, the revenues that they're generating on those loans, that interest that they would pay to someone else, part of it comes back to the zone. And of course, I just mentioned that city employees, as well as any downtown business that has employees that live and work in the zone, those individuals also get to benefit. So, that's a real quick overview of who we are, in about five minutes, sorry to blast you away with all that information, but I felt it was important to give you all everything that we could in a, in a capsule. So, we're asking for an extension, you would have to act on it tonight, from what I understand, on timing of, of state law, attorneys will tell you more, and it would begin January 1st of 2020, and it would run to the December 31st of 2024. I'm happy to answer questions, I have a feeling you might have one or two, but otherwise I can wrap up.
Any questions?
I looked through the bylaws pretty quickly, it's about 10 pages, so it wasn't, I'm, I'm a little surprised, we brought the issue of renewing the UEZ a few weeks ago, and there were some comments about needing to revise bylaws, and hopefully there would be more transparency, and I think there were even some specific criteria presented, either in an email or in this meeting, about financial disclosures to the council, making those financials more transparent, and those, that doesn't seem to be here.
Yeah.
It says that you'll report every 12 months about your activity, but it doesn't say that you'll provide financials.
I think that's just a, not very clear what we indicated. So what we're going to do is when we get the, we're going to create a new website, and we will be posting reports after our meeting on that website in like a public document form, like the city's run right now. Until we reach that point, we could just email out those claims and minutes to you all directly until we have the website running.
But there's no requirement for it, which I think is what was requested.
It is in our bylaws.
Where?
That we will be post, that we will be creating a website, and reports will be put like in a public document.
Okay, I missed it, I missed it, like I said, I just skimmed through it.
Essentially, the, I think the actual wordage, if you're looking for the wording, it's that the documents will be publicly available. And essentially, we didn't want to prescribe a specific method of delivering a document, we just said that it would be publicly available, and then we'll find a means to do that. If the council wants it emailed to them, that's fine, but I think the, the board's intent is to actually just publish it on our website, so that anyone could go in and click on it and download the documents and have them immediately available.
And all in the same place.
Yeah, and, and in a co-location.
So on page number nine, number four.
That's why I had circle two, Larry, have you read this yet?
I'm not seeing it, no.
Okay. You know my obsession with the word shall, I may.
I know, and I may, I may know that.
When it comes to the law. Number four, I mean, I didn't know much about this, you know, when we tabled it before and we were, came back to, there'd be, you know, better efforts for transparency, and I see that in here, but number four is worded to a way that it doesn't hold anybody to a standard, it sounds good. I mean, if we're going to be frank about it, the association shall make an effort to ensure transparency, that doesn't, that doesn't hold anybody to a standard if we're going to show transparency, and that's just how it's written. I think there may be.
Mr. Burke, we said I should read the whole thing.
I tried to in the minutes we had.
You should, by the way, via digital means, about that.
Yeah.
I think your sentence, "shall make efforts," don't really say they shall do it, they'll shall make the effort.
I mean, this is not that complicated, so it's, you just upload it.
I didn't think it was that great, I didn't think it was.
You just upload the UEZ packet that the, that the members get every, every meeting, upload their website.
I fully understand that, but when I was at the last meeting, we see we're going to table it for better transparency reasons, and then you read the bylaws in a couple of minutes, and when I read it as the law is written, I'm going to question it when I was told the reason we were tabling it to take it more serious, so.
We have every intention.
I know you do, but I don't, the way it's written, it really, "shall make an effort to ensure transparency of its finances and decisions, including the availability of its record available for public inspection by electronic and digital means." But "shall make an effort" doesn't say "shall."
So, Mr. May, as you would feel more comfortable if number four said the association "shall ensure transparency."
I would, but as the, why, this whole reason when it got tabled last week was kind of odd to me, because they can change their bylaws after we vote for this in this meeting, meeting after that.
We did the.
I think, I think at the end of the day, the buck stops with your appointments. You have appointments on to this board, by law, you have a council member who has to serve on this board, and the mayor has to be a member of this board, I mean, I would hope that you have faith in your appoint, your appointments to this board to ensure that there is transparency and ensure that they report back to you what is going on.
And I agree with that, and I wouldn't have even questioned it last meeting until it was questioned and it needed to be tabled. I know you wasn't, for transparency reasons, and then when you get the wording of it, it really doesn't ensure anything other, but then again, they can change the bylaws at any point after we vote for us, they're planning on voting for it, but the fact that when it was brought forward that for transparency reasons we were going to change some things, it really doesn't change anything.
Well, we did.
Your intent is, but on the, the way it's written, as a law.
But it still requires a two-thirds vote, it's not just a simple majority, which.
On the bylaws, yeah, I'm just saying they can be changed for it out, throughout the next, I mean, we're going to vote on something, and there's going to be a handful of people that's not even going to get on this board over the next election.
What I think Mr. May was trying to be clear about, so everybody can understand, as a corporation, you're not a part of the government, you can do business like any corporation can, and in fact, there's no limitations, and I've not read them yet, but I'm assuming there's no limitations on your ability to amend your bylaws, I mean, the supermajority.
Two-thirds.
Okay, so there is something built into, requires a supermajority, the supermajority of all members, not just the ones present. I'll sort of apply that to the, the mayor supports extending.
I support it too, that just when, when you're presented with more transparency and then you proofread a document that says. and then you proofread a document that says that, here's another one, special meetings the association shall be called on by the request of the chair and writing, by one-third of the members, notice the special meetings shall be out by the secretary to each member at least 48 hours in advance. Does that have any "shall" notification to the public?
Well, so I will answer that in this sense, Mr. Magels. Because this is not a government entity, there is no public notice required. So the confusion that's been created by the legislature is that there's so many appointments that come from the government to this not-for-profit corporation, that there is this appearance. However, they are not bound by any of the open-door laws or any of those things. But I mean, I agree with you. They are no different than Nathan's Board of Directors of Chopples, their 501(c)(3) by law.
Which was the reason that there was a request for more transparency?
Correct.
Listen, nobody, I'm not going against the UEZ here.
I'm just confused as this is...
I'm confused why it got tabled last meeting.
I don't know, I wasn't there.
I thought part of it was because they're going to do a presentation.
Yeah, they were, and bylaws and transparency was also brought up when we...
And we didn't have time to do bylaws until the 13th.
Every five years, this is always...
I'm not against it at all, period.
But the last time it was brought up, it was a big deal.
I would have voted for it last week, I'm going to vote for it this week, so when it was presented with a little bit of, there's not enough transparency, and we're going to work on this, one slide was about the transparency. But I still support it, and the way it's written is you could call a meeting within 48 hours in advance of all members, and no public needs to be notified, no city council needs to be notified, but the duty of our appointment is to notify us if need, so I understand that, and a vote can be made, on tax dollars be spent, and no one could be there, and I think that it was presented that they were going to change all this, and you can't.
Right.
So...
So we're not tax offers.
I misspoke, I apologize. But it was perceived as we're going to make all these laws, saying that we're going to be more transparent, but you can't on this board, because just like you said, Les, it's the same as a board that Nathan runs. I just want that to be clear in this meeting, that though I applaud everything that's in here, you, I know your intent is to be more transparent, but the argument in the beginning was, we're going to be more transparent, but you can't put that in this document. Because the way it's written in this document, it can be worked around 10 different ways. I just wanted that to be put out, because last meeting, it was presented as, you know, we're going to work on the transparency on this, and I just wanted to show that, though I do think you guys are, I'm going to vote for it, I'm going to support it, I would have voted for it before, but the idea that we can forcefully make this more transparent isn't available.
I would like to go ahead and move boards or anything.
I guess so.
I mean, because I think you support it anyway, so...
I don't have a problem taking it back to my board and changing that word.
Miss Harway, that's not what I was implying.
No, but because I fully think that they would pass it that way, just that change of a word.
I applaud your work on this, I applaud the UEZ's work on coming and being more transparent. It was just a more, when it was first presented, it was where you're going to make it more transparent. Well, it's only going to be as transparent as the body of the people that represent the board wants it to be. I think you have the right, everybody on the board does want to be transparent as is, I'm just merely making the presentation that you can't put it in the bylaws and not change it. You have a two-thirds vote to change it after we vote on it anyway. So it's not, nothing personal by anybody on the board or anything, it's just to show that transparency and all that came up, so...
Moving on, is there another question or concern? No, because there are two people who would like to speak for us as well. Okay, speak up.
And I forgot to mention that Mr. Ongden and Kelly Curran from the board was also here, to show their support.
I have a couple of questions, and I think mine are easier. When was, when was the JUEA first, when did we do this? When did it start?
I think 2000, with potential for a little bit before that.
It started in 1999, and it actually went into effect in 2000, because I was on the board.
And we went in five-year increments since then? And now I'm going to ask a rhetorical question. This was created because this section of town was deemed to be in need of economic support to get it to be developed. So we offered these benefits to people, correct, and businesses, right? What information did we use to determine, and I'm not disagreeing, don't feel like I'm rousing for a fight here, because that's not where I'm going, how did we determine that this area was economically viable?
There are some statistical measures that the state IDC basically set, or the state legislator set, to my understanding. I was not here in 2000, but essentially, there are metrics that have to be provided, and that's...
Initially, you had, you had to get state approval to do this.
Well, and it was a huge survey documentation, I can always send that out to you, but it was about the stick of everything you were going to do.
Okay, well, because, and here's where ultimately I'm going with this, I intend on going forward, but ultimately, this is the problem I see with this. As downtown has blossomed, whatever terminology you want to use, soon, what you're going to have happen is a bunch of people who don't need assistance are going to be taking advantage of all of these programs that provide assistance. So it's going to be nothing more than people who don't need it benefiting from it. It's going to have ran its course, because it's worked. I mean, part of the reason why it's blossomed is because this program has worked. So I would be interested, I won't be here in 2025, I mean, on this council, I have no plans to cease to exist. But I would think, like, the census information from 2020 is going to give us a much more clearer picture of what that looks like down there. I'm not for ending it in such a way as like that people are counting on it for these measures that you shared, but that is what's going to happen. I mean, this will have to fade away, or we're really participating in welfare for people who do not need it, too.
Statewide, the entire UEZ program ends in 2025.
Yeah, I think that's always the debate with the state legislature, because previously it was supposed to end now, and they amended the law to give the city councils an opportunity to extend it number five. So I think that's the same debate that they have up there when this comes up.
We would just like to cruise into that landing rather than crash. I think that's why I'm here, to present this information to you, is just to make it as soft as possible, so that everyone can plan and know this upfront.
There's two people who like to speak that signed up for this. Jay Ellis, would you like to come up?
Thank you, council. My name's Jay Ellis, I'm the executive director of Jeffersonville Main Street. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with the mission to help revitalize the downtown area of Jeffersonville. We're an accredited organization, and we are considered a model organization for Main Streets, both statewide and nationally. I sit on the Indiana Main Street Council, that is chaired by the lieutenant governor, and I want to give you a little background on Main Street, just very quickly. We use a four-point approach to revitalization, which is based on organization, design, promotion, and economic vitality. And we embark on a lot of projects throughout the year, and we couldn't do that without the partnerships, without the support of the city council, the Urban Enterprise Association, the mayor's office, other nonprofits, state agencies. Just to give you a small sample of some of the projects that we take on in the last 30 years, we've restored and stabilized 10 buildings in the downtown area, including the Pearl Street Infill Revitalization Project, which is a $1.2 million project to bring life back to the 400 block of Pearl Street. We manage special events all year, including the Chili and Brew Bonanza, the Spring Wine Walk, the Chocolate Stroll, 18 concerts every summer in Water Park, 22 farmers markets at Big Four Station, Jeff Fest, the Fourth of July Parade, the Summer Wine Walk, Farm to Table Dinner, Game Night, the Dash 5K and Veterans Tribute, the Holiday Open House, Small Business Saturday, and the Cookie Stroll. And the majority of these are funded through the Urban Enterprise Zone, so that's why it's critical for us to ask you to consider to renew it for five years. It helps the Main Street organization. We also have two grant funds that help keep our buildings vibrant in downtown. We started the Front Porch Project in 2005, and it's for residential improvements in downtown, and we've granted 135 grants in that time, totaling $250,000 approximately, and that has been leveraged into what we estimate $750,000 in residential improvements within the Urban Enterprise Zone. And then we have the storefront improvement project, which has been enacted since 2009, and we estimate that there have been 60 grants awarded totaling $250,000, and those have been leveraged into nearly a million dollars in investment in commercial properties in the zone. And we receive approximately 40% of our current budget from urban enterprise funding. Without the funding, it would significantly reduce our effectiveness as an organization. The state has expressed interest recently, at the last meeting I was at in Indianapolis, they want Main Streets to be sustainable and well-funded, and they're even tying that, making it contingent on communities getting certain grants to make sure that they have sustainable Main Street organizations. So thank you for your time. I just wanted to stress how important the zone funding is for us, and if you would please consider extending it for five more years.
Thank you. And Warren Schimpf?
Warren Schimpf, owner, co-owner of Jefferson, Schimpf Confectionery. I had a whole list of notes here, but I think a lot of that has been covered, and all I want to do, one of the basic things I wanted to say is to support the Jeffersonville Main Street, or the Urban Enterprise Association. It's been a great benefit to downtown, and, you know, one of the best things it's done is support Main Street, one of the major funding streams for Main Street, which I think has been one of the greatest things for historic downtown Jeffersonville, and the development of what's going on. Schimpf's has benefited greatly from being a, you know, part of the Urban Enterprise Association. We've gotten tax credits for some of the improvements, it's greatly helped us with the improvements. We try to employ, we have employed a number of residents of the zone who get tax credits, we get tax credits for hiring people in the zone. That's one of the great things. I don't know that there's, you know, how many businesses really take advantage of that, but I know our employees, when we give them their UEZ part of the, their W2s at the end of the year, they're grateful for the tax credits they get for being a resident and working in the zone. So I think you've been, had a great overview of what the benefits are. I just want to be here as a downtown merchant and one of the beneficiaries of having the UEZ here, and seeing the number of people that come into our business because we are there, so, and it's been a great help for us, so please consider renewing the UEZ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question. I'm not sure if this is per pegg or Nathan, but if the UEZ board, if you chose to contribute to a project related to homelessness downtown, could you do that? And have you done that? We, I mean, we're worried about, and not worried about, this is not negative, we're helping people take care of their front porches, we're helping people take care of their houses, we're planting new trees, yet we have people without food, and we have people living on the street downtown. I'm just curious, if a group of folks came and asked...
I think we have actually had a grant for Park County Care.
We, we...
When I homeless... Oh, sorry, I'm mixing the two.
We have afforded, let's see, affordable housing, we've done that over the years. I've been there since the beginning.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And I know that the businesses have really taken off, but the residents still need a whole lot of help, and like you say, we could actually do some grants for the homeless.
Any other questions or concerns for the council?
Motion to approve.
Do they have to do the reading?
No, it's a resolution. One and done, it's R16, right? That's...
R16.
Yes, 2019 R16.
All right, we have motion second to pass 2019 R16. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sitting five, are saying aye. Are there opposed? Five more years. Thank you. Next up, item number 10, Ms. Metcalf. 2019 OR 65.
Are there any changes?
No changes.
I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 65, the third and final.
Second. Have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 65, the third and final reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sitting five, are saying aye. Are there opposed? All right. Next up, item 11 on a new business, Nicholas Crevey, a resolution authorizing application, a submission of local match commitment.
The public hearing should go before that resolution.
Okay. All right, we have a public hearing for item number 11. This would be resolution 17, right? Is anyone here to speak for or against this side of the resolution?
For a public hearing, may I speak for the public hearing? Okay. I have a filing sheet, I'd appreciate if you'd sign in, just indicating that I'm in.
Yeah, see, usually, we have a quick discussion of what it is before we open up for a public hearing. That's why I was a little upset.
Okay, it's, this is a public hearing for the streetscape improvements at the hospital segment, CDBG application. So this is for CDBG grant funds for the Spring Street streetscape.
Is there anyone here for this public hearing to speak regarding the streetscape on Spring Street? Anyone here? Yes, there is someone. Come on up. Please.
Well, just for the record, I'm still, I'm Jeffersonville Main Street, Jay Ellis with Jeffersonville Main Street. I'm here to express our support for the city's MSRP grant application that will improve the streetscape along Spring Street from 10th to 14th. This project will beautify and make safer an important area of our city. The project's focus on the hospital segment of Spring Street will connect part of the historic downtown area with our historic neighborhood that has often been overlooked through the years. Going north on Spring, this section of Spring Street acts as an entrance to the hospital area and to Clay'sburg, and going south, it's a heavily traveled corridor into the historic downtown area, and we think this project will bring amenities and make it safer for pedestrians, bicycles, and automobiles to travel that route, and it's one of the gateways into downtown.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Well, I actually have to, there's some language I have to say here.
Okay, public hearing, you're still open, I guess?
Yes, thank you. So...
Stay with questions.
This is a state Community Development Block Grant, Main Street Revitalization Program Application, funded by Title I of the Federal Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. It'll be used, as I mentioned, for streetscape and public infrastructure improvements, which will include sidewalks, enhanced crosswalks, curb bumpouts, curb ramps, wayfinding signage, decorative lighting, additional tree planting, bus shelters, public art displays, bicycle lanes, 14th Street intersection improvements, and replacing the right turn lane at the Hospital Boulevard with pedestrian facilities. The amount of CDBG funds requested is $600,000. The amount of CDBG funds that will benefit low-to-moderate income persons is $257,220,000, and the local match will be derived from cash on hand from edit and general funds. That's what I have to say. If you have questions, you will notice that the resolutions, this is reapplication, but the amount has increased substantially from the last time. We have updated engineer estimates based on the Clay'sburg, what they did in Clay'sburg, the amounts spent there. The previous estimates were several years old, so that's where the discrepancy in funds came from the last time I spoke about it to now.
Can I say one thing real quick? In your packet, Nick, since you have two resolutions about the same project. The difference is, is the amount of money. There's one that has the amount of 5, 5, 3, 7, 6, 5, and the other one is 9, 5, 4, 6, 3, 2. So I just want to point that out to you all, so whichever one you all choose, if you choose either one of them, it will be 17.
And I can explain the difference.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So the difference is, the larger amount, the 9, 5, 4, 6, 3, 2, includes the 14th Street intersection, which I mentioned, that was a bid alternate on the Clay'sburg neighborhood segment. That was a bid alternate on the Clay'sburg neighborhood section that they did not get to. So, we thought maybe we could try to put it on this. It is within the environmental review for this project, so, you know, it's eligible to be included in the project. Makes sense. It's the intersection connecting the two sections, but, you know, it's up to you all whether you want to do that or not.
Okay, can I close public hearing?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Anyone else want to speak? All right, we're closing the public hearing. So, as far as the public, the local match, what is the match from the city's? The total amount?
So, if you go with the, to include the intersection, it's 954,632, which represents approximately 62% of the total project. If you take out the intersection, it's 553,765, which is 48% of the total project.
So that number is our, our?
That's your local match. The CDBG funds for either one is still 600,000. You're above the minimum match.
Can anybody sit down with Heather to discuss? Anything else?
Right now, it's just the commitment. I reviewed the funds that we had, and if we are awarded the grant, then we can mail down the exact funds from which the money would be taken.
Any other comments or questions?
So I guess what we need to decide are the two different ones, whether or not we want to include the intersection improvements or not. Correct?
Yes.
Well, on 14th Street, and I had to pull it up. I mean, that's the major intersection just north of the hospital.
Right.
I just had to. It makes sense to include. I mean, it has to, or you're going to be really, really nice, old, really, really nice.
And if, my question had to do with money.
Could we identify where it's come from? And if we have adequate dollars in a fund to do it, I'm all for putting that into the infrastructure where you can get a match for it. So you're getting a lot more bang for the buck. And because it is a gateway, I, I mean, I want to look to Heather and say, you know, we're close to a million dollars.
Well, just to the edit funds, I do know that there's some revenues current year, revenues of 2019 that are not budgeted. I don't have my check with me, sorry. So that surplus will increase for next year, and then I know that you haven't budgeted 100% of your revenues for 2020. So, it's definitely potential on the market.
Okay, thank you.
So, what's the resolution number?
Seventeen.
It's going to be 17. I would ask that we attach resolution number 17 to the resolution that outlines the, including the intersection with a local match of 954,632. Can I make a motion to approve 19R-17?
All right. We have a motion second to pass 2019 R-17, which includes, which is the amount of 954,692, including the 4th Street.
14th.
I mean, sorry, 14th Street. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Thank you. Next up, item, item 12, Lee Skip.
Yeah, we have members of Clark County Cares here, but before we get started, I would like to read something here as a state. The City of Jeffersonville Mayor proclamation, to all to whom these presents may come greeting. Whereas the City of Jeffersonville wishes to recognize the contributions of Pastor Nancy Woodworth Hill, and whereas the citizens of Jeffersonville, as presented by the office of Mayor Mike Moore, who stand in grateful appreciation for the tireless work and compassion exhibited by Pastor Woodworth Hill with her work on the opioid crisis, and whereas all Pastor Hill's work for Clark County Cares and her work with the community at large through her ministry at St. Paul's Episcopal Church, and whereas Pastor Nancy Woodworth Hill's presence has left a mark on the City of Jeffersonville and the citizens, especially me. And now therefore, I'm reading on behalf of Mike Moore, Mayor of the City of Jeffersonville and State of Indiana, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2019, as Pastor Nancy Woodworth Hill Day, in witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Jeffersonville to be affixed this 15th day of November. Woo! Nancy is, you can explain, this is them, because she is going to, Jeffersonville's losing it great, but somebody is gaining. Our loss is somebody else's gain.
So until the end of the month, I am the co-pastor and rector of St. Paul's Episcopal Church in Jeffersonville, and the facilitator of Clark County Cares. And I speak the, on behalf of the leadership group, about half of which is here tonight. So on behalf of this community group, I thank you for your time and for the financial support you have given to us. It has helped us bring awareness of the opioid epidemic and its widespread impact. Think about local businesses, grandparents raising grandchildren, issues with public health, costs to law enforcement and judicial systems, just to name a few. And it's brought this awareness to numerous citizens in our community directly through our meetings and programmings, and direct, and indirectly with our partnerships, especially with the media. We are proud of the impact of our advocacy on this community. Last year's visit to Huntington, West Virginia, with about 15 community leaders, gave us the opportunity to see what can happen when community decision-makers come together and seek grant funding. The result now is just beginning to be seen in changes with the Clark Memorial Health Emergency Room Program to track overdose patients and invite them to seek care through partnerships between Lifespring, the courts, the jail, and Circuit Court, one especially, to guide substance use disorder clients to care. Yay! And Clark County Cares partnership with the Scott County Partnership to lay the groundwork for a recovery-oriented system of care. We're in the process of gathering people together. We've had our second meeting with that, a number of local groups. So your leadership and support have made a difference in the lives of many individuals, those who love them, and ultimately our businesses, which require healthy workers, our first responders, our courts, and various support systems. So the leadership group of Clark County Cares has been busy planning our fifth annual week-long slate of events for our community during National Drug Fact Week, which is January 20th to 27th, 2020. And we're planning a full slate of events to share facts, increase awareness, and invite community action. We remain a grassroots group, dependent on many kinds of support from our community. Our sponsors include Clark Memorial Hospital, or Health, Lifespring, St. Paul's, WLKY, News and Tribune, Freedom 101, a group working inside jails, and many other community leaders and institutions. So we invite the City of Jeffersonville to once again sponsor, help sponsor our events. We ask you to consider contributing $5,000 towards this January series of public education and awareness. And an additional $5,000 would allow us to bring in Tonya Kane. She is an inspiring national speaker, African-American, and we'd love to pair her with our Martin Luther King Junior Day events. She is available, much like we brought in Sam Canionis three years ago. And we also invite you to be aware, attend, and share information about these events with your friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And again, I thank you for your time and kind attention to our request. I'll answer any questions or call on the group.
Can you comment some questions?
Is there anything?
I think, I think the discussion is more going to be, where are we going to pull money from, not, not if it's worthy, a worthy cause or not, because we all know that it's a worthy cause. We appreciate everything that you and your organization do.
Thank you. I am really proud of this organization. A lot of people have come together across many different lines to work effectively in our community.
The norm has been out of the special projects, but it won't be until, they don't have their event until January, but when would that, if you bring that person in, when will that payment have to be? Do you know? I think we'd have to have it committed.
I think we'd have to have it committed, but it could be probably that week.
We can't commit the 2020 budget.
Do we have the $5,000 left in special projects? Just shy of that.
Why don't, why don't we come back at the first meeting in December with where we're going to bring the money from? I don't like making it, being asked for $10,000 and giving, and have to answer right away when we're trying to pull it out of our head where it's coming from. I, I think there's many supportive of it. I'd just like to have time to say yes, I'll take it from here, not there. Is that?
Is it just $5,000, or is it $5,000 and an additional?
I counted 10.
$5,000 would help us with our week. An additional five would help us bring in this speaker.
10 is the.
10 would be lovely.
Let's add this item on the agenda for our next meeting, and we'll see if we can't come up with the money, or if there's an interest by next meeting. Okay.
How much, are you looking at our special projects? How much is in it?
You have a claim in to be paid for 600, and that you just approved, and the current balance is 5,164, so you're just shy.
Yeah.
Ms. Collins, can you add this to the agenda for next meeting?
Yes. Do you want Clark County Cares to put that on?
Yes, please.
Sure.
I mean, is there time to do an additional? Because I, yeah.
Not an additional.
I was thinking we could identify a couple.
We'd have to piece it together.
If, if it's a, to do it.
How much is in gaming?
Gaming, is there, is there balance in gaming?
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Yeah, we'll find out in the first and second.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best of luck, and thank you. Next up, item number 14, because item 13 was tabled, so. Mr. Merkley, resolution, I guess it'd be 18, is the next resolution?
Yes.
Approving and ratifying a local cooperative agreement between the city and greater Clark County Schools.
We do this every year. This is to allow great Clark County schools to purchase salt from us for their facilities. I believe school boards already approved this.
We don't have to have any public care, nothing on this, right?
Salt, this is a, this is a. That's what it takes. Yes, yes, yes.
Ready for a motion?
You gotta have, you gotta have all those documents for transparency.
I'll make a motion to pass 2019 R-18.
Have motion second to pass 2019 R-18. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Who's opposed? All right, next up, item 15, Ms. Medcap, in order to transfer certain funds from the same department.
These are kind of self-explanatory, maybe?
This would be number 66.
Self-explanatory transfers?
This would be what, 66?
Yes. I'll make a motion to pass.
Oh, I don't know if you want to explain anything, or?
No, I think that.
She said self-explanatory, it's the. I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 66, in the first and second.
We have a motion second to pass 2019 OR 66, in the first and second reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Ms. Medcap, you're still up.
66?
66. That was 66.
Okay.
Yep, you're up again.
All right, so the first one is another $150,000 for fuel that Mr. O'Brien had spoke with you about. And then the last portion for the parks is, all adds up to $70,000, which was discussed by Mr. Northam at the last meeting.
And that's all coming out of parks, right?
Yep.
Not the edit?
Nope.
Motion to approve OR 67 on the first and second.
Sorry. Have motion second to pass 2019 OR 67, in the first and second reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Medcap, while you're there.
Yes.
I just have a question. Will there, is there a need to set up any additional meetings through, or special meeting?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Just want to make sure all the finances are in order before we finish the year?
I think so.
If something we do.
Yes, unless there's, I mean, you're still having two meetings in December, right?
Yep.
Okay. That'll be good.
Thank you. Mr. Wilder, attorney comments?
None.
All right. Department heads, anyone here to speak, regarding department heads? Seeing none, we did public comment, so, council comments. Mr. White?
No comment.
Ms. Paris?
No comment.
Ms. Maples?
Two things. Need to replace my drain for, for my, my appointment now, it's changed his work status in Canton, so I've located someone that might fit him back on board.
Tim Franklin?
He actually lives in my district too, so sometimes that's hard to find him.
Second.
Motion.
I'm sorry, I got to get a name.
Tim Franklin.
Tim Franklin? Can you have him, because I'll have to.
Yeah. And sorry about the, I told Ed, I just, this finally got worked out about 30 minutes before.
That's, that's all right.
So you'll get the contact if there's any interest?
Yeah, I'll stay up with Ms. Collins.
Anything else?
Also, Captain Moreland in the back of, I just, him every year, you'll see him with a beard on. Traditionally, our public safety doesn't, aren't allowed to wear beards throughout the year. They do that for, they have to make a donation. How much is the donation this year, do you know?
I don't know what's on yet.
That means he hasn't paid yet. They make a donation, goes to shop with a cop or some other organization to allow police officers to grow beards for 30 days in November, and most of them take full advantage. So when you see cops walking around with beards, it's on for a month, so.
Ms. Skip?
No comment.
Mr. Alkin?
No comment.
Ms. Drowland?
Wanted to acknowledge Councilman-elect Donnie Croft is in the audience, and Councilman-elect Bill Burns has joined us. Look forward to working with you guys next year in 2020. On the same subject, I wanted to ask ahead of time, I'm trying to put together a date to get some of the new folks and some of the old folks together in the building to talk with some department heads. I think we're going to land on December 2nd. Certainly, any member of the council is welcome to join, as long as we don't hit our more than four-person threshold. It's really going to be geared towards these guys that are going to be coming in fresh. Just a little bit of orientation with HR, with finance, I think engineering and the arts commission, and maybe some others are going to join us. But we want to do that December the 2nd, in the mayor's conference room from 12:30 to 4:30 before our council meeting. And I would like to make that a working lunch, but of course, that's going to take an appropriate, not an appropriation, but an approval of a claim for that, by the council. So I wanted to ask ahead of time if anybody objected to me ordering lunch for that group on the 2nd. If so, I can skip that part of it.
I'll pick. What's the time on it?
12:30 to 4:30.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any benefit to advertising that in case you have more than four? If you wanted to be safe, we could advertise it, but in public, I'm not banning everybody to show up. I'm not banning. Okay. Yeah, I mean, would, if somebody from public came, would you ask them to leave?
Um, maybe? Yeah, because we're going to get into.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Just checking.
Ms. Ellis?
Are you finished?
Yes. Ms. Ellis?
No comment.
Mr. Samuel?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate those up here that ran and were re-elected, and those that are out there, congratulations, and look forward to watching you for four years, four-plus years, and hope it, hope it goes very well.
four-plus years, and hope it, hope it goes very well. I wanna say something about Judge Jacobs, he, he left with, I guess, the Clark County Cares group. I haven't spoken to him for quite a while, but it's good to see him out. I don't know many of you have, but, um, yeah, that's all I have.
Isn't there usually a city clerk comments?
Oh, it's all right, I've made enough, but I do have one. Did you get the appointment letter that I asked you to sign? It was laying there.
I signed everything that was in front of me.
It was the one, your appointment? Yeah.
If not, I'll, I'll stay around and talk to you, but I thought I signed, signed everything that was in front of me.
Yeah, Heather has some stuff...
I did overlook it. I see Lynn Ashack in the back, and I know we did not have your item on the agenda, but did you want to say anything at all, Lynn, anyway?
Uh, what, uh, can you ask me?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking you to say anything, but you typically don't stay for a whole meeting unless you have something to say, and I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, or wait till next meeting.
Wait till next...
Okay, thank you. Thank you, man.
All right, that's all we got.
That's your turn.